It's called the order of the City Commission Regular Meeting, Marine City Fire Hall, Thursday, March 21st, 2019, 7:00 PM. Can we please have a moment of silence for our dearly departed? And please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Van Nuys.
Here.
Commissioner Breit.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Flossom.
Here.
Commissioner Merchant.
Here.
Commissioner Bertamans.
Here.
City Mayor Newlin.
Here.
Also present is Robert Davis, City Attorney, and Mary Ellen McDonald, City Attorney.
All right, moving on to Communications. Need a motion to accept and file the departmental activity reports and Marine City area fire run reports, the zoning board of appeals, meeting minutes, December 5th, planning commission meeting, February 11th, and the Tetra Tech survey and boundaries analysis results.
Mayor, make a motion that we accept communications items A through E as presented.
Support. Questions? Got a couple on the boundary. So where are we going from here with the boundary?
Some of the issues are a little more complex and will probably have to work with the attorney in the future to resolve some of the issues. Some aren't quite complete. This was just an initial report that we got for status of the properties and some are complete as written.
Anybody else have any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion's carried. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and address. Please limit your comments to five minutes. This time is for you to raise issues. The Commission will not respond, but will be followed up upon as necessary. Mr. Haas.
Bill Haas, 203 Pleasant. Now first I'd start off with congratulations to the Marine City High School girls soccer team. They won eight, nothing tonight over New Haven. Uh, one thing, you know, a couple of years ago, my daughter was on the volleyball team and they all like to do their dinner before the game deal. Took them to a little bar for the dollar burger on Wednesday because, you know, Thursday was the game or what have you. Now my youngest daughter with the soccer was, uh, why don't we do what Nat did? So, you know, I started looking through and been a while since I seen it, so I pull up Little Bar, Little Bar Specials and Little Bar's teamed up with, uh, the snug in the Burbank Theater. And yet she's there voting at the ZBA. Now I see there's something in the minutes to put something she said in there in the ZBA, just from the chair person. When Becky Lepley told Terrence Avery how to vote at 1:29, 29 seconds. I believe that was the April 5th meeting. So, you know, I don't want to hear something from somebody. I would like a specific time when she actually said supposedly, uh, I do remember saying she got the 300-foot thing. I don't recall her saying she was in, but even if she, you know, she might not have financial interest in said project that's being done, someone voting to let the Burton's do, I mean, are we still on the, we're still on the hook for hotel people, you know? We, you know, we're on the hook for the hotel for the Burton's. Another 350 people, that's 300 some cars, 15 percent of our population. I work five, six days a week. I'd like to come down, enjoy my waterfront peace and quiet without all the garbage downtown. You know, but, you know, now, now, you know, I thought we got rid of some corruption type stuff, you know, having, having people that are teaming up with the people, people that are putting the people of Marine City on the hook for money, you know? Let them take care of that debt. You want to build another theater? Hey, more power to you. Take care of that debt first. Don't leave the people on the hook and want to keep building and building. We haven't even seen what St. Clair's going to do yet, uh, you know, might have a heroin corner down there soon. But, you know, it's not good, people. It's not good. You know, you voted all, you know, you wonder why our things are crumbling since 2006. You know, a lot of things I see, I hear, I see pictures. Things just don't make sense to me. Something's not right. Things need to be looked into. Plain, plain, you know? It's just, just, you know, that kind of stuff. When someone's voting and for the people and yet she's teamed up, you know, she giving them 10% if they come in with their coupon or tickets or what have you. You know, like you say, 15 percent of our population, all three, once you let them have the next 350, 300 some car, where are you going to put 300 some car? We probably take care of what we got downtown now. You know, the citizens do a stage in and for the, for one weekend, line up Water Street, except for the two-hour parking neighborhood down by the post office. Tell all the people on Market Street, hey, we know some of you don't have driveways, park in the street because we're just doing a stage in. Send the message, you know? Come on, you know, this is, this is ridiculous. You know, a couple of other things. Something got taken care of real quick, so I'm going to leave that alone at the present time. But, you know, to have, to have a commissioner, you know, it just doesn't make sense to me, people. A lot of things don't make sense that I've seen, things that have happened just don't make sense. And no one has answers. No, you know, I say things, they're talking about redoing the minutes. I stood up and asked a question about the car, if anybody did traffic survey. Never saw that on the minutes of the deal unless they changed it last minute. You know, so Christina Baxter, whoever's our city clerk, the ex-police clerk from back in the day. It's not good, people. It's not good.
Anyone else like to speak?
My name is Fred Urecker. I live at 342 South Mary Street. Last year, I called the city manager or left a message for the city manager if she would look into what we can do to prevent boats from speeding up and down the Bell River. The Bell River, if nobody knows it, is a no-wake river, period, by state law. I've been to the county sheriff, their boat patrol. I get this. They put their hands up. What do you want us to do? We're not there. Somebody comes by and does something, call us. I say, oh yeah, and you'll be there an hour later. I've been threatened three times. Two of my neighbors been threatened by guys coming up and down the road because we yell at them, slow down. Get flipped off. Again, I've been threatened. I had one guy started to come on my property and he thought better of it. I just want to know if anybody can do anything, if the city can do anything, go to the state to get the, get the proper signage to put on a river, no wake. I mean, it's just, it's as simple as that. One of my property has no seawall, as do my five neighbors down from me. We've, when I first moved into the city, when I was first looking at my property, first question out of my mouth, do I have to have a seawall? My realtor called down to the city, no, your grandfather didn't, you don't have it. One of the selling points for me to buy that lot because I didn't want a seawall. I wanted the natural flow. I'm a kayaker. I can take my kayak right off my lawn, right into the water. Perfect. But this getting threatened and guys coming up and down the river and, and they're not leaving little wakes, they're, they're two-foot wakes. So every time they come up and go down, they destroy my property and my neighbor's property starts washing away our shore. And I just want to know if anybody can do anything or anybody's wanting to do anything. The sheriff won't do anything. I've called the city police. They go, are they there now? No, they're gone. Well, call us when they're there and we'll come over and do something. Okay. Okay, so what are you going to do? They're gone, you're not here. Because they don't last, as soon as we start going out there, they, they, they beat house and go on, go on out to the river, out to the main river. So, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Hearing none, moving on to approval of the agenda. Need a motion to approve the agenda with two additions and they would be on 10 D and 10 E. Request from the DPW Superintendent on MDOT Transportation Economic Development Grant for repaving and the TIFSA Subcommittee Report.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the DPW Superintendent MDOT Transportation Fund and the TIFSA Subcommittee Minutes Agenda. Did I say that right?
The agenda with the addition.
With the addition. Make a motion to approve. 10D and 10E.
Okay.
Second.
Motion support. Any other questions on the additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Carried. Next, I need approval for the City Commission Regular Minutes, March 7th, 2019.
Make a motion to approve the City Commission Regular Meeting and the City Commission Closed Session of March 7th, 2019.
Do them separate.
Do them separate?
Yeah, we have to do them separate.
Gotcha. Make a motion to approve the City Commission Regular Meeting of March 7th, 2019.
Support. Motion support. Any questions, corrections, or deletions on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Carried. Moving on to the City Commission Closed Session Minutes, March 7th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carried. Moving on to the Consent Agenda. Need a motion to approve the special event permit for the VFW Poppy Sales and a business license for M29 Outpost LLC.
I make a motion to approve the special event permit for the VFW Poppy Sales.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions on the two? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Breit.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossom.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Bertamans.
Yes.
Mayor Van Nuys.
Yes.
All eight motion carried.
Next, we're moving on to unfinished business strategic plan results.
We've got Dave Struck here to, in essence, talk us through the results sheet that we have before us in the packet.
All right, well, good evening, commissioners. Great to be here again tonight. And just here is a follow-up to the March 4th special meeting that you held to start the strategic planning process to update priorities for the next three years. And I believe you all have a copy of the draft document, which is basically the summary document of everything that we put together. And just to give you some background on how we ended up with this final document here, ultimately, there's four overarching goals with 15 priorities and you can see that it's based on categories. The categories that you see on the final list are basically the recurring themes that came up in the suggested goals in the commissioner surveys, as well as the input that we got from department heads, and then the discussion that we had at the March 4th meeting. So there was an initial list of 27 goals suggested by city commissioners and a number of them, as you recall, were recurred, you know, they were brought up by multiple commissioners. Some of the goals were brought up by as many as six commissioners. So obviously, those types of goals rose to the top. At your last meeting, at the special meeting, we did a sticker dot voting at the end where you all kind of went through the list again and identified further priorities and we took the results of that voting and further refined this list. And ultimately, nine goals received at least one vote during that exercise. The suggested goals, like I said, from the department heads, particularly ones that were similar in nature to goals that commissioners suggested, items that were already in your existing master plan, as well as some of the input and the outcomes of the first impressions tourism exercise that you did with MSU Extension, all of that was rolled into this as well and results in your final list. So at this point, I guess I would take any questions or comments on this initial list before moving on.
Anyone have any questions? Free straight forward.
Okay. So, again, I don't know if Elaine shared the email that I put with this, but, you know, this list is intended to really have a balance between having more general priorities and specific objectives. So it's meant to be something that's practicable, practical, achievable over the next three years. Kind of, you know, what we discussed at the meeting on March 4th, you know, with the Marina, that's obviously a goal that's in your master plan. That's something that came up from many people through the input exercises. But ultimately, that's something that's probably going to be more of a long-term goal, so that's why that's not included on this list. Is there anything that's missing at this point from what's on there? Anything that maybe should be added at this point?
Anyone have any?
So what we're looking for you to do ultimately is to adopt this list as your list of approved priorities over the next two to three years. What we generally recommend and we've seen other communities do is they'll basically laminate this type of form and keep it in front of them during meetings, kind of keeps your goals and priorities kind of front and center as you're having your meetings, making decisions. What we will do is we will put a final document together that will include this as sort of the summary piece. This is really the bread and butter of what we've developed for you, but we'll also have some supporting materials that'll include the input that we got from the department heads, the summary of the other goals that are identified by commissioners, that you've got sort of a complete package to support that document. And then as you go forward, you know, each year, it's recommended that you kind of go through this exercise again as a commission to identify, you know, look at, look back at your current priorities, make sure that they are still valid. Is there anything that needs to change as conditions change? You can certainly review them and say, you know, these are still valid for another two to three years and if anything ever comes up that you need to change, you can certainly amend your priorities at that time. So, you know, this is meant to be a flexible document. Obviously, we can't perfectly predict the future, but I think what we've come to with this list is a pretty good consensus of everything that we took in through this process.
Thank you.
So that's, that's really all I have for tonight. If there's any additional questions or inputs, you know, please let Elaine know and essentially at your, for your next meeting, we'll kind of give you that final document for, for you to take action on.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to new business, decertification of vacant, vacation, street ends. But that didn't work out so well.
So on a review of our map of all of the classified miles that we have with MDOT in the community, it was discovered that there were a couple of street ends that for some reason had never been declassified off the list of MDOT for our mileage calculation for the city. These are where East Clair and South Mary, in essence, kind of come together. There's actually a house part of where the road was and then the other street end isn't there anymore. And then the other one is Washington Street, which is right next to our office where the tower is. So this is just a matter of cleaning up some of the paperwork and taking care of this for the state.
All right.
And I think we would need to do three separate motions for each of these resolutions.
Of course you will.
Of course.
All with roll calls.
All with roll call votes. All right, so Resolution Number 07-2019, Decertification of Washington Street Between South Water and the St. Clair River. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions on this one?
I have a question.
Sure.
So when you declassify and vacate the street, what?
The street isn't even there anymore.
Right, so then who owns the property? There's nothing. Like there's, the property owners don't acquire that?
So for the Washington one, we already own it, it's our park.
Okay.
For the street end of St. Clair, yeah, St. Clair, we still own that.
Okay.
It's just.
So it doesn't get?
Green.
Okay. Just green. It's just green.
And then, like I mentioned, for South Mary, there's already a house on.
It's not considered streets. It's off the rolls as a certified street.
Okay, all right. So it's not just vacant property that somebody acquires?
No.
More paperwork.
Just ask. You know, we're always looking.
Mm-hmm. All right, so we got a motion to approve. Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossom.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Bertamans.
Yes.
Mayor Van Nuys.
Yes.
Commissioner Breit.
Yes.
All eight motion carried.
All right, now we're moving on to Resolution Number 08-2019, Decertification of South Mary Street Between South Williams Street and the Bell River.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on this one? No? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossom.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Bertamans.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Breit.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
All eight motion carried.
And moving on to Resolution Number 09-2019, Decertification of East St. Clair Street Between Washington Street and Union Street. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Support.
Motion second. Any questions on this? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Flossom.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Bertamans.
Yes.
Mayor Van Nuys.
Yes.
Commissioner Breit.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
All eight motion carried.
All right, moving on to the Tetra Tech Contract Extension.
You have before you a proposed contract extension from Tetra Tech, who currently provides service at our freshwater and wastewater treatment plants. They also act as our engineering consultant on a per-contract basis for costs for that. This contract is just for the service for the operations and maintenance. It is a five-year contract with the first year's price being held at what we are currently paying. The contract goes through, the current contract we have goes through June 30th, 2019. And representative from Tetra Tech, Ken Kingsley, is here if you have any questions regarding the contract.
When's the last time we actually quoted it out?
I don't think that we have. So they have been in service here for 10 years and they took over from when we turned it over as being an employee-run operation.
I have a question. So they're guaranteeing a price for one year, even though it's a five-year contract?
Just for the first year. So the next four years would be subject to negotiation.
Are any other bids?
We have not gone out for bids. This was a contract that they provided to me as an alternative to bids. Other options, if you choose not to move forward with this, is that we could go out to bids and more than likely, they would provide a bid as well, I would certainly hope.
I would think that we should go out to bid.
And this is in no way, shape, or form against Tetra Tech, but it has been a long time and we have been trying to rebid things out. I guess I, I'm going to have to agree. I think we should at least do due diligence and give it a shot and since it's been so long and, you know, let everybody bid on it.
Can we get a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Support. Motion support to put this out for bid. Anybody have any questions on it or concerns on it?
I just want to say we did it before with our new attorney. I mean, we had another attorney group for a long, long time and we put it out for bid, so.
Okay. There's no more questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Carried. Moving on to preliminary budget summary.
So what I did was I provided everyone, in essence, a summary of the highlights of what's changing in our budget. These are things that we've kind of talked about in the past and issues that kind of reach a certain threshold and things are changing. We've always gotten questions in the past when we've worked on the budget about what's the information for the raises for all of the groups and any large purchases. So that's what I've tried to do is kind of summarize the more pertinent things that will be in the budget that you'll be getting in May?
April.
April, I'm sorry, for the budget workshop. So this is an opportunity to talk about these so that when we work on finalizing our spreadsheets, if there is anything that is an issue, we can address that now.
I've got one question. The police command training for Chief Heslop, is that the program through Eastern Michigan?
There's several out there. The one I'm looking at going through is a Michigan State one.
Okay, but it's the same program?
Same program.
Chief, that's a large time commitment, you realize, right?
Because that's a masters-level program, isn't it?
It is.
What's the cost on that? I mean, you know, a lot of this is nice, but without having the actual figures, I mean.
I brought that figure if you want to know what it's going to cost.
Because it's six months, isn't it, or nine? Program?
Six-month program.
Six-month program.
Most of it's distance training while actually being in the office. We'll do all the computer-based.
And the budget for that is, and this doesn't, it's $6,000, which is budgeted, but that also includes about $1,800 for the other training as needed for the other officers. So roughly, then it's going to be $4,200 for that. And that's the cost of the training. Then there's lodging and that needs to be added into there. We did lodging at $1,000 and then there's, you know, any meals or anything like that that would be required and that's $300.
Yes. What is the training for? I mean, I know that I have to, if I used, and I'm going for my job, I'm just wondering, the chief has been here, he's been chief, what, two years, three years?
About three.
Three years. Was this offered when he first became chief for?
No.
It's a trend, if you don't mind, Jim. I can touch it on a little bit. The Sheriff's Department has actually sent everyone from the sergeants on up through this program. They, we've had multiple fire chiefs have gone through it in the county. It's a staff and command school, which helps on budgetary needs, recruitment, the whole gambit of high-level retainment and organization of the, of the, of the groups. And it's Sergeant, or Sheriff Donlan is a high proponent for it. I believe Ed Gratz from Kimball Fire has taken it. I mean, it's, there's quite a few people.
Great program.
It is a good program.
It's a great program.
It's, it's actually fairly tough, too, for some of the areas, because I knew some of the gentlemen that take it from, even the sergeant and lieutenants through the jail have all had to take it now, so. Did I do okay?
Yes. Thank you.
Do you want to add anything to that?
At one point, it was, it was in the budget, I think, two, three, four years ago. We were going to pay $400 to sell the vehicle fund, but that got hacked. So this is just another opportunity to go back for the training.
And one of the things in our strategic plan is to, is it something about the police and their image and I'm hoping that this And I'm hoping that this class can hopefully teach some good, solid materials that can help with that.
So do you have all the totals for all the departments already? Or are you still working on that?
We've got it, but Elaine hasn't reviewed them.
Okay.
She will be getting the book next Tuesday.
Okay, cause some of this stuff, until I see some of the figures, I mean, I have some issues with some of them. The wage increase.
I mean, this is an opportunity now to talk about it and Mary Ellen's got the numbers.
Well.
It's not gonna be the complete budget, but I wanted to be able to provide something to you ahead of time because I know it's been an issue in the past is that you wanna know what are we looking at for the big changes?
Well, and the problem is too, is like you got the increases, but we never see what the increase is broken down to. You know, I mean, we always have to work to get that. I understand that we.
Talking about the wages, correct?
Yeah. And I understand we have to do whatever we have in the contract for the Teamsters, but I see one percent, one percent, and then non-contract, two percent. And I thought we just did a two percent increase last year.
We didn't do an increase, we actually just did a one-time lump sum.
True, but it was still an increase.
In essence, their pay is back to what it was prior to that.
Still gotta, they still had a, some type of increase. It just didn't go against all the
But what Elaine was trying to say is.
It's not cumulative, like everybody else.
If someone were to call and wanna know what our wage is, it's still gonna be the same wage that it was a year ago. They don't consider stipends as part of the wage.
But we did the stipends so that it didn't increase all our other costs, you know, long-term. Long-term.
Yeah.
I see a reorganization in the PD about moving an admin from part-time to full-time. I have reservations on that one. Paving in the south, parking lot of three hundred Broadway.
We have estimates of about twenty thousand for that.
Twenty thousand?
Right. It is a pretty substantial insurance liability and because we are the owner of the building and leasing it out to a couple entities and with River Rectine Zone getting ready to gear up and get in there with their activities, I think it's a pretty essential thing for us to have to do.
The flower watering, there's another sore spot with the community. It's bad enough that last year we had to get rid of the person because they almost ran somebody down.
Can I speak on that? I just wanted to let everybody know that I was approached by Jeannie Frank to see if we would be willing to handle the funds coming in. I know there are several commissioners that donated to this. It was all through donations that they have been able to continue the water program, which is a substantial cost. The business has really stepped up for this, as well as some of the residents. So it speaks that they want to continue with this. And then there's another organization and they're taking care of the hanging plants and the flower pots are actually being, like another generous donation, one group is donating the money for that. So all they're asking the city to do is to continue with this by just having the person hired to do the watering, which, you know, is, you know, I feel it's good. I mean, that shows that the community still wants this program going, that, just because they've done that. And there's been a lot of hard work by Jeannie getting this going and so she brings me in the donations and then I'll get the bill and pay the bill.
But I know the first year that we ever had flowers, it was done for, the money was raised and the people that put them up actually did the watering on top of it. Watered itself because the city didn't wanna get involved. So I just know we had issues with that last year.
One, one other thing along with that, that kind of as a partner is, we're also going to be continuing with the beach attendance as well. I just wanted to mention that, too.
Those were in last year, though, right?
Yes. And, and the watering was too.
So it's the flower person, that person's been in there.
I agree, but like I said, we had a lot of issues with that last year and it could've been, we could've, could've ended up our lawyer dealing with it. That's the only thing that my concern is.
Yeah.
It didn't go well.
I'm sure Mike will leave more time to him, just want you, Mike.
Mike, on the paving on the three hundred Broadway, is that a total tear out?
No, I had a contractor come over, look at it, he thinks he can just remove the asphalt and lay right over the top.
Remove the top coat and then put a new top coat on?
Take it down to the base.
Take it down to the base, yeah.
Would, would anybody be interested in knowing what the water and sewer plant repairs are? Or you just wanna wait till you get your budgets? And to tell you, most of the repairs that are being done are all gonna be done using that ready-to-serve funds that would delay. So I didn't know if you were interested in knowing that or you just wanna wait till you get your budget.
Lay it on us.
You want it?
With the election laptops and the election coming up in May, that might be something that the Clerk's Department is trying to see if this year's budget can actually accommodate getting those couple of laptops, so that might actually be pulled into this year.
And that's how we kinda did the budget, too.
Well, I wanna ask a question about the watering still, is when we had the city and the Lions Club and the Rotary Club and the Quanis, we adopted parks and we planted flowers. It's our responsibility to water. The city doesn't water. So are we creating, you know, you're doing something for this group, but not for another group.
But those are parks where the plants and the flowers are at, are along the street.
It's a city property.
They're along the street, so I don't know how you could designate someone to water those when you have adopted a park to take care of. These are not actually in the parks.
And some of the parks are actually watered with sprinklers.
But there are, there's quite a few that aren't.
Yeah.
They didn't, they didn't put them in there.
Doesn't Saint Clair, they, seems to me their garden club provides that service to, along with the flowers.
Actually, it's the garden club that's still meeting the pots.
No, no, I'm talking Saint Clair.
Why not here in Marine City, the ones that are doing the pots?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
I was just saying that I know that, that there is a couple parks that the, that we're watering and one of them I do, so.
Well, at this point in time, because nobody has come forward to volunteer to water them and, you know, we've got these great donations for flowers, it's something we've done in the past, we have the equipment, we've, we've got it in the budget. If that's something that you as a board feel that you don't wanna pay for that, we can take it out before you get the budget in April.
I really feel we need to do it and as long as we do a good job of it, I've worked with Mike on different things we've done to keep them looking nice and.
Yeah, and some of the issues that we experienced with the person that was doing it last year, I've talked to Mike about it and it's something that we're definitely gonna be keeping an eye on and certainly look to the community to help keep eyes on it as well.
I guess one of the things a lot of people in the community get upset about is that when we're having a pouring down rain and it's we're getting an inch of rain outside, they're watering the flowers at the same time.
But it's extremely hard with hanging baskets, cause some of the water, it doesn't necessarily, if it was a bedding plant in the ground, it would've absorbed the water, but hanging baskets almost need to be watered regardless if it's raining or not.
I agree, I've had them, but.
And there are also other things in that. For instance, we had the issue with the, the roots last year and I think there was like Dawn detergent or something like that that they put in it to help with the.
We had to, we had to adjust the water a little.
Yeah.
What's the lighthouse exterior cleaning? Why are we doing that? We just painted that.
I don't know if you've noticed it, but there seems to be some mold or something that's on the outside, so in essence, kinda power washing it.
A lot of people take pictures of that lighthouse, we have to make it look spiffy. Where are the sea wall repairs?
Over by SAF, so I, I think we talked about it last year, that we did get that letter from SAF that they had to make some improvements to their sea walls and were looking to us to make some corrections as well. We had some of the sidewalk in that area that was settling that will need to be fixed as well.
What are we budgeting for recreation? What are we doing there?
So I have been getting a lot of information from people about potential recreational options that I wanted to talk to the board about. Actually, at our next meeting, we have someone that is looking to put together a volleyball league and is gonna be looking for approval from the commission for set timeframe where he can use it solely for the purpose of a volleyball league. You obviously saw the presentation from Life Skills and I've been getting some information from them. I got information from Saint Clair about potentially participating with them for swim programs. One of the ideas that I was thinking about in lieu of us having, in essence, a recreation program is putting together a website, it would be a page on our website where we could be a contact point for people that want to go there to find out about all the recreational opportunities in the area. So we could advertise there for things like, like Life Skills, the swim programs up at Saint Clair, some of the parks programs and things that they have going on in other neighboring communities and even some of the other opportunities that groups put together.
Like the different yoga and gymnastic classes that are offered in the community?
Correct. You know, Washington Life, it's a good source for a lot of opportunity as well. You know, pickleball classes. Now that we have the parks development for this year that we'll be doing up at King Road Park, potential for pickleball leagues and shuffleboard leagues, things like that, that people may put together. So not necessarily us having the responsibility of a recreation director doing programs that we put together and taking the money, but this is something where we could have one central source for all, everyone, you know, residents, anyone else in the area alike to go to as one single source for recreation activities, which in essence really wouldn't cost us anything. The person that updates our website, generally Elizabeth, could do that along with all the other website updates that we have.
So if somebody in the community had a class, you know, whether it be a spin class, yoga class, whatever, they would just contact the city with their information?
Yep.
And then you would just throw it on the, I like that idea.
The bulk of what we had been doing recently, in essence, was contracting stuff out.
Right.
So we, in essence, would just let contractors know that we're available, we, in essence, will have our recreation page and people can find all of the information on our recreation page.
I know when she told me about that idea, I said, "That's fabulous." I, I think it's great, you know? If we had like a facility to offer the swim classes where we didn't have to involve paying for leases and this type of stuff. If we had the buildings, I'd understand it, but generally, most of the time, and we've learned that from these past years, when we do these contractual stuff, you'll get someone coming in here that's really motivated. You might have six months to a year and then it dwindles down and then they're not here anymore. So then we put all that effort into it and usually it costs the city money to run those programs versus if you were to just, you know, be the publication notification for everybody to know out there what's available in our community.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I used to teach a lot of classes and, and you're right, it, people initially go, "Oh, my God, we gotta do this, we gotta do that" and everything goes in and then it dwindles off, so just having that information in one place for even the Y and, you know, Port Huron, whoever wanted to participate, that's a great idea.
And it would, in essence, be a no-cost initiative for us. But it would, I think, at least fill a gap for the community right now. You know, down the line, if it's something where maybe we wanna form a recreational authority with neighboring communities, that's an option. But until we really, I think, find out and get people participating in programs, because that's been another problem is we just have had a lack of people that have wanted to participate in programs. The population just isn't really there.
And that's, you know, as I've mentioned to her too, and she said something about that, is we all went to that strategic planning. You've seen what they said in the years ahead, it's gonna be mainly, majority of the population, it'd be seniors, you know? And they already have a senior center to go to, so. And we've also done the tellies in past years with recreation and we've shown the majority of the participants don't even live in the city. They're outside of the city.
Yes, Lisa.
I don't see anything on here about trying to do a webpage upgrade, which we seriously need. I know you tried once before, but I think we should seriously look at trying to get that thing cleaned up. The other thing, too, is since I take the bike pass a lot, we've never paved any of that since we put them in and they've gotten some seriously wide cracks in there. We're gonna have to eventually start addressing those also. I know East China did theirs up to ours. They pretty much cleaned up all theirs, but ours is the one section on the other side of. The Gersi's pretty bad and then there's some big cracks over here. And then there's a big, one of your water things that's actually a trip hazard on Ward Street there. We need to really start looking at that.
Yeah, we've been working on expanding the capital improvement plan since I've been here and really getting everything that we own on this capital improvement plan that, in essence, is over like a five-thousand-dollar value. I don't know if we got that on there, but I'll talk to Mike and we'll make sure that it's on there and start planning.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
Mike, they haven't put anything on in, I know the state did all the bike paths, but have they started putting anything in for grants for maintenance yet?
No, no, we, we still don't, we, we do still grant the bike path this year, but it's been a bad year.
I was just wondering if they're, they've started offering, cause everybody's starting to get to that point where they need to be, you know, attended to now. Okay.
The skating, ice skating rink under recreation, is that where that's gonna go?
It would be under your parks if, if we did the skating.
And then, do we got any more information on that? I know last time we asked Mike to get with the guy, with Algenack to see how they built it.
We've, we've been exploring our options and we'll get something back to you soon.
I have not had a try yet to look at ours, but I would like to have a two-inch gap going around yours. And so we could talk to Brian and see if he can put that on there for the same price that we bought the one for.
Yeah, one of, one of the things with that is that the basketball hoops down in Algenack have like a sloped neck whereas ours are straight. So if we were to replace the, the basketball hoop. How do you call it? The, the mount?
We have to buy a boost next.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, the cost of doing that should hopefully be cheaper than doing all the asphalt all the way around it.
I know at those posts, they've got them wrapped in a cushion, so even when they play basketball, they jump into the pole, they're gonna get.
Yeah, that was, that was a big concern of mine is that if we were to have done a patch of asphalt all the way around, we'd still have a post for the basketball court in the middle of an ice skating rink. To me, it seems like a safety issue.
So you're gonna change the pole?
That's what we're looking into, yeah. That might be the better option than doing the additional patch of asphalt all the way around it.
Anybody got anything else?
Well, did you want me to go over that or no? The plants?
Did you?
Upgrade?
The water plant, did you still?
Plant upgrades, yeah.
The wastewater treatment.
Yeah, you can give us the cost real quick.
Upgrading pumps, bearings, electronics, valves and pumping, piping for thirty thousand dollars. Door, this is all at the wastewater plant. Door replacements, four thousand dollars. Grading replacement on top of plant, five thousand dollars. And then replacement of lab equipment is six thousand dollars. So that's, and you know, a lot of this stuff that he's doing is requirements by the DEQ, so it's like, we have to do it. But that's the purpose of those ready-to-serve fees and all that. That's a total of forty-five thousand dollars. It's all gonna be used with ready-to-serve fees. Then at the water plant, again, it's replace pumps, bearings, valves, electronics. We're gonna use ready-to-serve water there, ready-to-serve fees. Water plant filter number two replaces sand gravel and media, but we're using water monitoring. Remember, we had that water monitoring fee also on the water bills, so we're going to be using that. That's ten thousand, the other was twenty. Cribbing for water intake in Saint Clair River using water monitoring. Again, that'll be water monitoring funds for twenty thousand. Replace aluminum chemical feed pump number one, that's four thousand, that's ready-to-serve fees. Chlorine inline meter sedimentary basin, final tap water number one, that's five thousand, ready-to-serve fees. Alarm system at the water plant is six thousand, ready-to-serve. Replace the outdated SCADA program. The original program is from nineteen ninety-seven and is failing. And this includes a computer upgrade. And one of the things that we had to do. And one of the things that we had to do that we're all putting in our budget, some are doing it this year and some are next year, and you'll see that, is that we have to all upgrade the majority of the computers because we need to upgrade to Windows 10, because no longer do they, will they service the, or give you tech support?
Security patches.
For your Windows 7. So, this will take care of that, because this was one of the computers that were included in that list. And then electric repairs, cleanup, water, $3,000. And the $945 was what for the office computer that we're gonna be using, using, and that's going to be using ready-to-serv. What it amounted to was $73,000 from the ready-to-serv water and $30,000 from the water monitoring. Again, these are all money that we collect on the water and sewer bills and we reserve them. I restrict them for future purchases. So, it has been a good program that we started several years ago, Mike and I, starting to increase, that we offered or added these fees to the water and sewer bills. And that's how we've been able to do a lot of these capital improvements.
Yes, Lisa.
Water monitoring thing, I thought the state was gonna start looking at that again to bring that back and start supplying some money, and then I thought that was only supposed to be used for the water monitoring.
It's all the stuff that they use for water monitoring. It's all the equipment and stuff that they use. That's why they're...
All right. But what about the money? I mean, there was a whole thing on it last year from, that they were gonna come back and they were gonna start looking at getting it all hooked back in, because we were the, one of the few communities that kept it versus everybody else.
You're talking about the sensors for the water monitoring?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's already been done.
Yeah. Did you get extra money for that?
All the stuff was paid for. All the equipment.
From the stuff that we've already...
That was a grant that was done through SEMCOG for pretty much all the communities from like Port Huron down to the here.
So, everybody's got the water monitoring now?
Yes.
We've got all new upgraded equipment?
Yep.
Okay. So, what are we replacing if we got all new equipment?
Not just the water monitoring. I mean, there's, there's more than just these sensors. There's a lot of other stuff to go with it.
Because there was talk that at one time, there was talk at one time whether we needed to keep it so high.
This, you know, that it doesn't generate a lot of revenue.
You mean the water fee on bills?
Water monitoring that we collect from the water bills does not generate that much revenue.
Yeah, and we still have the ongoing costs of the consulting company that comes out and does the testing.
I understand. I'm just saying, I mean, that, you know, I'm...
Is that something, when we do the audit, that that is determined?
We just do it on our fees, you know? They restrict them and stuff. It's restricted, but they're, what I'm trying to say is, is a lot of the money that we're collecting on the water and sewer bills is not substantial, and the money that we are, they're using to keep, it's kinda mainly there to just cover our costs to maintain every year. It's not like we're sitting there on the money and just letting it accumulate. Mike is using the money as it goes.
Okay, last thing. Is there gonna be a water and sewer increase this year?
I haven't done the revenues yet, so I can't tell you. But there will be the general one, at least, I will tell you that much, is the normal increase, which is cost of living. But I don't know what, that's what I'm gonna be working on on the weekend, is my revenues for water and sewer.
A lot of work that goes into the budget. You gotta collect numbers from a lot of different places, do a lot of research and computations.
Any more questions on the preliminary budget summary?
Is there any way to get any type of consensus on some of these items moving forward with the budget? I mean, in particular, the wages, it affects so many line items in the budget.
I guess I wanna see what the, I gotta see what the each department's got, you know?
And I can't get you that any earlier.
I understand that, so...
I'm trying to do what I can to get ahead at least.
But a lot of these things, until I see it, I can't make final decision.
Is there anything that there is consensus that we don't want to do? You know, I mean, we've talked about the command school, we've talked about the seawall repairs, the lighthouse cleaning, the flower watering.
I mean, I'd like to see it during a regular budget session and leave it until now and then, you know, have a actual numbers discussion on it and that.
And something else, I told Elaine, I had planned on doing this year, is it's like the first page you open your book is gonna be all the assumptions that I've worked into that budget. Not the capitals, just the assumptions, like the pay raises, what we're assuming the liability insurance is going up, you know? Just so you know what assumptions I'm using in there when I'm calculating them, you'll see them right up front.
So, one of my responsibilities as a manager is in essence to work with the department heads and put together a balanced budget to provide to commission for your review. It is a timely process that we have to wait for, a lot of numbers and information, and this was something where I tried to provide a little information ahead of you before we get too deep into a lot of the numbers and printing out all the spreadsheets and everything, getting things ready for, for you. Is this helpful?
Yes.
Is this something you wanna see in the future? Is there something potentially more that we could do ahead of time above and beyond getting the budget? Because we just, we can't get it any sooner than what we do, and we have our budget workshop spread over two to three days, however long it takes, in April. And then after that, you know, we work our way towards going to the approval of the budget for May. Obviously, if there's something that you guys need changed by the time we get into the budget and the budget workshops, it takes a little bit more time. We need to update spreadsheets and everything. It may require more special meetings so that we can get the budget approved in May. So, if there's anything else that you can particularly think of, aside from the whole complete package, that could help us in the future, that'd be helpful, let me know.
This, this was nice. This was good. I think it's, it's kinda like, you know, you work with your department heads and, you know, it's kinda like your needs slash wish list, so, you know, the majors. So, I think you did a good job with it.
And we start the budget process actually in January. They get their budget sheets, but you really don't wanna start it any sooner, because you really need like a six-month base to kinda come up with it. And then I give them time, like three weeks to do it, then they get it back to me, then I have to, you see how big the books are? That's all me incorporating what they've put in there. And then, then we met, this year we changed it a little. We met and did the capital improvement with Jim and Mike, because they're the ones that do it. So, that they had, we, we knew ahead of time what that was gonna look like before we met actually with each of the department's heads. And we meet with each of the department heads, and then I verify whatever's on their capital improvement plan is also in the budget. So, and then if there's something that they see they need to be added, we catch it before we sit down with the department head and everything. So, it, it is a lot of work, I mean...
Yeah, and there's also things that we have to wait for from the state and contracts and things like that to be able to get the numbers that feed into the budget.
Anybody got anything else? We're gonna move on then. Move on to M. Transportation Economic Development Fund, Category B Grant. Mike, you wanna speak on this?
This is the first year they're coming up with this one. Fifty percent grant up to $250,000. We're not gonna go after the whole 250, but we're gonna try to get at least 100 and...
It's increased by, since, so we're gonna get 50% on it. Remember, you gave me those three numbers?
Right. Right, I got my numbers here though. So, we're gonna have to, after grant for 105,765. So, match, we're gonna be matching that to do those roads that you see there. And these roads were picked, as you can see, they're, they need to be done, but the minimum work. I can get an order and get the water lines changed to the homes and pave those streets if we get this grant.
Okay. Wasn't Woodworth one of the areas that you have some sewer issues in?
That was on the other side.
Oh, the other side?
The other side. Down Woodworth, down to Bell River, new water main down there, San Teres.
Okay.
Pretty good. So, we're all good on that street.
So, you're only doing half of Woodworth then?
Yes. From Mary to Bell River.
So, one, one thing to keep in mind with this grant is that we don't have any of the infrastructure issues underneath any of these roads, so that's kind of what he means by saying these are the easier ones. These are the ones that are probably in the worst condition of all of the ones that we have left that would need to just be paved with no need underneath. The interesting thing about this Category B grant, so new potential one-time, maybe two-time deal, they might do it again next year, is that it's for small communities. So, it's not something that the Detroit's, the Southfields, the Grand Rapids are going to be eligible for. It's not a huge pocket of money, but it's definitely something that we felt we wanted to get something out there. I know in the past, we talked about when we were doing road projects, putting them before a subcommittee to kind of review the work that Mike had done, take a look and, in essence, make a recommendation to the board. Time is kind of of the essence on this one, because it's a very narrow window when they announced it and when the applications are due. We do have one more opportunity. We could squeeze it in at the next meeting, but then it would be due the very next day. Wouldn't really recommend that. We were able to get this put together. We would still need to take photos of the roads. If for some reason we do not get the grant, we, I think, would probably have that subcommittee put together to take a look at the roads and figure out how much or what our next roads are gonna be, because we do have in the budget still 100,000, or I think maybe even a little bit more than 100,000.
Actually, we have, let's see.
We, we do have a portion budgeted, so we plan on doing a couple of roads.
The first two roads that we were gonna do. And I mean, I have the whole amount in there, but we were only gonna do those first two, which were, I have it in here.
So, what do you need from us, Mike?
I need the resolution.
They're requiring a resolution of support for the application for the project.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 010-219, Resolution to establish request for funding, designate an agent, and attest the existence of funds and commit to implementing a maintenance program for milling and capping of Butler Street, Frederick Street, Herald, Catherine, and a portion of Woodworth funded by the Transportation Economic Development Fund, Category B program.
Motion support. Any other questions on it?
Well, I think this is a start, if we can at least try to get that. At least it's a something and at least it pays for half of it if we can get the grant.
Well, and I'm hoping that they haven't, I'm hoping that they haven't seen our name enough that we're a new one, that they'll wanna give the money to us.
Real quick, so it was 250 that you were, as a total?
Yes.
And you're not, you're not asking for the whole 250?
We're not asking for 250.
Can you ask for it later on? The remainder of that?
No.
Okay, this is one time, one time only?
This is one time only, like in here. If we start any projects right now, we're not, we cannot be reimbursed.
Okay, all right.
If for some reason we do not get this, we can actually apply for the 2020 year for this too.
Okay.
So...
All right. Any other questions on it? Motion, support?
Roll call.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Burden?
Yes.
Commissioner Burden?
Yes.
Ms. Burden-Bach?
Yes.
Commissioner Burden?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Claus?
Yes.
All A's, most of the carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Moving on to the Tifa Subcommittee Report.
You have before you, hopefully, the report from the Subcommittee. I'm not gonna go through it item by item. Basically, the Subcommittee determined that at the present time, there were no projects worthy of planning at this time, either for lack of, of funding. We don't have a bank at this point, and anything that would focus on, say, a neighborhood for improvement would be too small, a tax base, to actually be of any benefit. So, while the Subcommittee recommends that we maintain the Tifa authority, we're gonna put it on the shelf for now until things come up that, one, we can see there's a sufficient tax base for, and, two, we have to remember that, that we have to get the, the buy-in from the county, and conventional wisdom right now is the county ain't gonna do that. So, we have to make sure that if we do have a plan for something, it is sufficiently enticing that the county will wanna buy in on it. So, those things, you know, they may be in the future, but right now, we figured that there really wasn't much that we could do. And we not only looked at the Tifa authority, but there are other tax incentive programs out there for different little niches, and the same thing was true. There really wasn't a sufficient tax base. There really, we really didn't fit. You know, so there are a lot of things that we looked at over several weeks and jointly came to the conclusion that we just gotta put it on the shelf right now. Maybe something will come up like it has with Saint Clair with that business park, that we can take it off the shelf and reapply it at some time in the future. Once we kind of put the nail in that, we branched out and actually looked at quite a few other things that are outlined there in the, in the report. A marina right now, while it's still a hot button, is, is kind of out of, just out of our reach in terms of our ability to fund anything. There are properties may be available, but they're out of the city's reach. But this, this Commission, the Chamber of Commerce, individuals should still be trying to reach out to people that might be interested in purchasing a piece of land and developing a marina that would be used to benefit the city. A couple of things that have, have kinda caught fire and seem very doable. The Subcommittee was working on developing a kayak launch site. There are a couple of sites that look favorable. We wanna continue to pursue those ideas and come up with a, decide which site we think is gonna work out best and come up with a plan. There is money available through the county, various funds in the county that would assist us with that, so that's a very doable project. We are looking at perhaps bringing the Clinton River tour boat to Marine City. It was docked, you may have noticed, down by the bridge this fall, last fall. I've had some talks with Paul Gallus. He's very keen on doing that. He knows at this point, he needs to get together with the city manager and the city attorney to look at, you know, what the possibilities are, how it would benefit the city, how it would benefit him, and so forth. A very doable project, which would bring people to Marine City. And as, as indicated there, we also had, are kicking around the idea of, we don't have a marina to bring people to Marine City, but Saint Clair and Algenack do. And wouldn't it be nice if we had a transit service between the marinas in Algenack and the marina in Saint Clair to bring people to Marine City and bring them back? Another very doable idea that we would like to explore further. So, the recommendations of the Subcommittee were that, one, there's really nothing that we can do at this time with the Tifa authority, so let's shelve it, keep it in our toolbox. And, two, we would like to have the city commission, we have to, what, propose... And, two, we would like to have the city commission, we have to, what, propose an ordinance? What's the, what's the correct verbiage for that? To create something along the lines of a Community Economic Development Board, which would consist of, like the Subcommittee, members from the city commission, the planning commission, Tifa, Chamber of Commerce, business owners in town, and some Marine City residents, whose job it would be to explore things like a kayak launch site, put together a plan, cost it out, do all of the groundwork so that we could prevent, present a finished product to the commission for your approval. In addition, the commission might have a project in mind that the board could do the same thing, do the investigation, do the planning, do the costing, and again, come back with a recommendation for the, for the city commission. So we unanimously thought it was, was an idea that, whose time was come. We've proven the efficacy of this type of group in getting things done, moving things forward, making recommendations and plans. So it's up to you guys. You want to, you want to have a working board or not? We're looking to see if we have a motion for it. Any questions? And of course, Lisa and Jake were, were both members of the commission, so if you guys want to add anything.
No, I think you did a good job, Joe.
Thank you, ma'am. Of course, Bob is.
I'll move that we accept and move forward with the recommendations of the Subcommittee Report as presented.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on it?
Just like, like to say that the Committee really did a nice job. Meetings were very productive, and Mr. Moran, by de facto, I think, became the chair of the meetings. I did nothing but supply pizza. So it was a good synergism, and.
It worked.
He did, he spent a lot of time, as did everybody, and I think it was a good committee. It served out its purpose, which is what you want your Subcommittee's to do. You don't want standing Committees. It had a purpose. It met the objectives. The report is finalized. It was, it was, it was the way it was supposed to work.
So with, with this resolution, with this motion, are we?
We would start to look at.
Getting you involved in.
How to form, it would be a non-binding, it would be a recommending board, it would be a strategic planning and recommending board. You wouldn't have authority to bind city money or to make the final decisions. And like Mr. Moran pointed out, we talked about, it would be a two-way street. If the city commission has an idea, you can send it to this body to get some study done and bring it back, or the body can come up with ideas and send it to you for your thoughts and concerns. And there was a lot of enthusiasm to continue that.
So you're talking the economic development?
Community develop, Community Development Board, a recommending board to the city commission to study ideas and to make recommendations without authority to make final decisions or bind money.
Yeah, we, we wanted.
Kind of a study.
Be inclusive to, not just economic development, but we want to look at community development as well. What can we do for the neighborhoods?
Yeah.
We have a good name, yeah, we, we struggled.
Yeah, it was, so, you know, it's a generic name at this point. You guys may come up with something a little bit more whiz-bang in your, in your wisdom and ingenuity.
The Whiz-Bang Committee?
The Whiz-Bang Committee.
I'll phone you through that. We're not going to go there. Makes something extremely easy to say, but.
We'll come up with some acronym.
Oh, that's even better.
Very nice.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
There was a, did we?
Motion, support.
Motion, support.
Okay.
Roll call or not?
You want to roll call on this one?
Yes.
Roll call vote, please. If everyone is. You ready?
Commissioner Murchison.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Branson.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Callenham.
Yes.
Commissioner Clauvin.
Yes.
Yes.
All A's motion carried.
Moving on to disbursements, including payroll for $206,158.63.
I make a motion to approve disbursements including payroll for the total of $206,158.63. Second.
Motion second. Any questions on it?
One question since the chief's here. There was a 100 MCTD challenge coins. Was that, what was that, what were you guys doing?
So the latest thing, back in the day, departments used to pay patches. And the recent trend that's going on now is these challenge coins.
Okay.
We had a local business person help donate money to the police department.
We had a department meeting, took a vote, and it was kind of unanimous thing for, within the department to purchase these challenge coins, just to hand out, here's the Marine City Police Department, here's our slogan, here's our challenge coin.
Okay, all right, great. Just wondered what it was.
You got one?
If you want one, I can give you one.
Yeah, I do. Challenge accepted.
Any other questions on it? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Branson.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Callenham.
Yes.
Commissioner Clauvin.
Yes.
Commissioner Murchison.
Yes.
Commissioner Heflin.
Yes.
All A's motion carried.
Moving on to the preliminary financial statements, I need a motion to receive and file.
So move.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on the preliminary financial statements? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post carried. Moving on to Resolution Number 006-2019, Budget Amendments, need a motion to approve.
I make a motion we approve Resolution Number 006-2019.
Support.
Any questions on this? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Branson.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Callenham.
Yes.
Commissioner Clauvin.
Yes.
Commissioner Murchison.
Yes.
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 Moving on to City Manager's Report.
Since my last report, I attended the SEMCOG General Assembly, Blue Meets Green, and Homeland Security Emergency Management Meeting. I met with MEDC and EDA regarding the redevelopment-ready communities and other programs. They are evaluating St. Clair, and we should be next, so hopefully sometime mid-year, we'll get our evaluation. Tifa meeting this weekend was canceled due to issues with quorum. It was a very variety of things, so nothing in particular that sidelined that meeting. Hopefully, they will be able to get their business taken care of next month in their meeting. There was a drain that collapsed next to our office, one of the storm drains. The DPW department did a great job on getting that fixed and replaced. We also, while they were down there working, moved the anchor onto the concrete pad, so we'll be working on, hopefully, getting some type of memorial plaque for that and have, hopefully, a ceremony for that in the spring. The email server transfer is going to be completed tomorrow. It should be the final step for the transfer of information onto that new server. You may experience some disruptions of service if you have it connected to your cell phone, so they'll be working on that at the police department tomorrow. I'm not sure about the timing. 8:00 AM, so if you have any issues, either Friday or Monday, we should be able to get those taken care of for you. I will be at the State of the County meeting tomorrow. I did speak with the new Homeland Security Emergency Management Director for the county today about our emergency management plan, that we have our committee that we're going to be working on updating that. One of the things that he would like to do, being the new director, is take a look at that plan. I know at one point in time, Jeff Friedland, the previous director, was looking to update the plan, and I think that kind of got sidelined with other work and limited hours, so I think the new director maybe is going to look at potentially updating that. So we might be in a bit of a holding pattern here to see what they do. If they update it, that's something that we, in essence, would template off of their new updated one. He has a lot of ideas for changing it. The current one is about 10 years old or so and could use some refreshing and new information. I did mention to him that I felt it was important to have a section where you can make it very locally specific, because when we did have a emergency shelter set up, we found out just some shortcomings that we had in our plan from a local perspective. So hopefully, I'll be able to work with him on that, and then our Emergency Management Committee can work on progressing forward with that. I don't expect anything probably for another three to six months. That's all I have.
Any questions for the city manager? Can you check into some, some signage for the No Wake? Work on that?
So it's waters of the state, so it's controlled by the state. Unfortunately, there's not much we can do, and I know, like Jim kind of reiterated, without being there when something's happening, it's very difficult to actually do something about it. The more I kind of started thinking about that, I know we were talking about trying to get some cameras and Wi-Fi down at the beach. With him talking about that and thinking about it, I don't know if that's something maybe we can investigate, is potentially getting some, some cameras there. I have heard that you may or may not be able to issue tickets for No Wake if you can get the MC numbers on the side of a boat. We'd have to do a little bit more research on that as well.
I mean, there used to be No Wake signs posted around, sometimes on the bridges, sometimes whatever. I mean, we used to have them, I mean.
And any good voter.
They should know.
Any good voter knows that it's No Wake no matter what because you can't meet the 200-foot setback.
You always have that one guy that, you know.
Yeah, yeah, and, and the thing is, is there is just no good way to go after that unless you have police out there all the time. You know, I'm, I'm a voter, and I see so many things that people do wrong, but there are just such a lack of facilities.
Jim, you had something?
And opportunities.
I do. We, you know, when, when the gentleman goes up there speaking, we looked up, it is a city ordinance, and if he can provide us an MC number that's willing to go to court to testify, we can then take enforcement action, even though it's court to testify to his.
Cameras. Pictures. Your best bet.
Yeah, and, and the response I get is, take a picture, and if we ever pull them over, then we can ticket them in. If we don't ever pull them over again, you're wasting your time. That is from the county.
No, we can, we can take enforcement, as long as you can answer, we can take it to court. If you're willing to testify against them, it's a misdemeanor, it's a 90-day misdemeanor from the city ordinance.
It's usually the same people that live on the river.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any more of the questions? Moving on to Commissioner Privilege. Mrs. Heflin, you want to start us out?
Sure. Tomorrow, I will also be attending the State of the County address. I went last year. I went last year as well, and it was very well-attended. It was very informative.
You gonna get one?
Bill?
Yeah.
Mr. Huff. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
As I was saying, tomorrow, I'll be attending the State of the County address. It was very well-attended last year. I assume it's going to be very well-attended this year. It was really informative, and I'm very excited to go. I also want to let everyone know that Friends of City Hall is currently seeking donations for a grant consideration that they're trying to get. They need to raise $3,000 between now and April 12th. They're seeking donations. It's a grant called Crowd Wise, Crowd Rise, Crowd Rise. And if they get the $3,000 by April 12th, they could, the grants are anywhere from $25,000 to $100,000. So just wanted to throw that out there, and that's all I have.
Mr. Richard.
I'd just like to mention that the Marine City Rotary Club was able to give to River Rectine Zone $800. We were able to raise that money through the 5K run that we do during the Maritime Days Christmas event, which is also known as Coach Miller's kind of memorial run at this point. So through that, once again, we were greatly blessed with funds, and we were able to pass those along to River Rectine Zone, which is at 300 Broadway. So at this point, I just want to just give, just mention that, we were able to help.
Thank you. Mr. Clauvin?
Just what I was going to say, kind of the same thing, but I did talk to them, and they did, they've got the floor all done now and leveled off. River, they're moving on.
Hey, yeah, I just, the Marine City Area Chamber of Commerce and Washington Life Center ran a very successful llama race on last Saturday, last Saturday? No, two weeks ago? Yeah, I forgot now. But yeah, but everyone who was in attendance had a lot of fun, and it was very successful, and it did raise some nice dollars for both, for both organizations. So thank you to everybody who came out to support that. I too attended the SEMCOG meeting. It was my first SEMCOG meeting as our, well, period, not even as our, just as our representative. Besides Governor Whitmer being our keynote speaker, the main focus of the, of this meeting was to get a vote to approve the regional transportation plan for Southeast Michigan through 2045. And this plan is not just for auto, it's for, it's for pedestrian, for water, for rail, and so, and bike. So, and basically, what this plan is right here, okay, this plan right here, it's basically just the guiding document of how the investments, how money's going to be spent on the transportation. And, and the thing is, it's not like, you know, because I did ask, because I was, I came in late to this, so I wasn't really sure about how this thing worked. And it's not really, it's not our local, it's not our local plans. It's more like federal plans, so it would be something for like, more like on maybe M29 or something like that. But our safe, our.
Safe for school.
Safe-to-school thing was part, was probably, was part, I would assume, what was part of this at one point? Okay, so this was part of this plan. But there's basically $35 billion in this plan, and it's over like about 174 different projects, so through 2045. So it was, was pretty informative. It was, I'm kind of looking forward to the next one, so we'll see what goes on.
Couple of things. It's finally spring, thank God, and, but, you know, I do a lot of walking, and there's a lot of grates, the drain grates that are plugged with stuff. If you have one, try to clean them out. I keep mine clean. I know the DPW gets to them. I turn them in as I see them, but there's so many from the winter where it just gets packed down right in there. But if you got one, try to clean them out because with the rains coming, it'll keep the flooding away from your house a little bit. The other thing I noticed too, I took the path along Shart here there with the new sidewalk, but I noticed we got a real issue with the gravel trains dumping gravel all along there, and it's getting pretty heavy all along the sidewalks and on the curbs and in your drains and everything else. I mean, I couldn't believe how much has been dumped along there from those trucks. And I don't know what we can do, but they should be cleaning them a little bit more before they're leaving those yards.
And we've been working with the county. The county has sent letters to the trucking companies. We just keep getting on them. One of the issues with some of the buildup is because of the, the snow and ice that it starts getting built up there. But everything's loose now, and it should be cleaned.
It's, it's pretty heavy on there. You try to ride a bike along there, and there's a ton of big chunks of stuff along there. And I just wondered how we're doing with the M-TIRA contract and the recycle bins. Any word on that?
Getting closer. Well, there's, well, if you want to have a closed session on that.
Yeah, all right.
They did actually deliver some bins to the DPW today.
Should have got them today. Did you get them today?
So you did get some? Okay.
Supposed to get 50.
I didn't tell them, but they're worried a lot.
Okay.
Just in a, in a global way, there, there's a. Just in a, in a global way, there, there's a lot of dynamics right now with waste hauling contracts. I think you guys have read enough to know that. I've let a few things play out, and it should be to our advantage going forward.
Okay.
But I know the city manager was, was very concerned about getting those bins, and I think the first delivery was today.
Well, the new contracts, they cost $10. And because we're still operating, in essence, under the old contract, I wanted more, because we've had so many people that have been asking.
She wanted 4 million, and I think we're going to get...
I wanted 100, but good deal.
They tend to break a lot of them, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Price, you again?
I have one quick thing I forgot. I don't know if you're going to mention it or not. Severe Weather Awareness Week is next week, and they will be testing the sirens on Wednesday at 1:00.
Well, they're not doing the Monday.
Well, Severe Weather Awareness Week is a little bit different, so they do it on Wednesday. That's a national thing. So I have been told that they will be testing them Wednesday at 1:00.
And we've already had one tornado hit in, you know, in the rural area of Flint. So it is that season, so everybody be careful and take shelter when needed. Fire Department's planning already on different, different events that we'll be staging with, so hopefully, we're not needed. And other than that, we did lose Coach Miller in last, last week. So he did pass away, and we do the, the Run Forum in, in his name in December. So reach out to the family and, I mean, he fought a hard fight with pancreatic cancer, and he did succumb to it last week. So everybody, reach out to the Miller family and the Coppins family, so. With that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion support. All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried.